I'm gonna ask you to read this whole thing.
Okay, today is Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. Call the village board in order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Jerish?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Prackno?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
All board members are present tonight. We do not have an invocation. I don't see Pastor Gentek here. So if not, would everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance? The flag's to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, we move on now to the approval of the minutes of October 22nd, 2024.
I move that we approve the minutes of October 22nd, 2024 as presented and dispensed with the reading.
Second.
motion by trustee Proctno, second by trustee Bush. Without objection, or no, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Record showing the answer's approval. Move on now, mayor and board of trustees report. I apologize in advance, we have a lengthy one, but we only have one meeting a month, Mr. Knickerbocker. It builds up. I know you're waiting for a bait of breath for this report, so.
I'm out of breath here.
You're sitting on the edge of your seat, just waiting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We see how awake you stayed during this thing. Okay, a couple things. One, back on November 2nd, we had coffee with the board where we met at the old Elk Grove Bake Building. Actually, had a nice turnout. We did, just so the board knows, we did get back to everyone who had questions or issues. They've been responded to, taken care of, and should be in good shape. The one thing that's still outstanding is looking at the driveway by the town hall over there by Torpitz Mill. They had met, I think, on the 20th of November, right?
We're playing phone tag with them right now, so.
Around that time?
Yeah, sometime within the next week or two.
Well, I'm talking, Kobe. How are we doing on leaf pickup? I saw him come by.
Great. Unfortunately, a lot of the leaves haven't fallen yet.
Are we gonna try to do an extra one?
Well, we'll see, because it's supposed to possibly snow this week and next, so.
It's not gonna stay though.
It won't stay for sure.
I'm gonna go melt it all.
Okay, so depending on weather and all that. So otherwise, the last pickup will be next week, Thanksgiving week. Abbreviate schedule for Thursday, Friday, we moved up. So everyone should have the leaves filed by Monday.
Yes.
Just to be safe. Okay, and then, but you have the dumpster still available at the Public Works Garage on Beaster Field and the one on Devon.
Right, all the way through, I believe it's December the 15th.
Yes, two minutes to. They can bring paper bags. If they bring plastic bags, they have to dump them out. Take the plastic bags with them. Okay, so everyone heard that. And I think group picks up yard waste through...
December 1st, isn't it?
Oh, 15th, I think.
I think it's 15th as well.
Okay, so 15th also? Okay, so if you can't get them, you do that. So, thank you, and guys doing a great job watching me yesterday to come by. The vacuum thing is, actually, I was talking to someone that lives in Palatine. Oh, police officer lives in Palatine. He was working out on Sunday with me here, and in Palatine, they don't have the suction thing. They actually push it and then pick them all up. So I think our suction thing's a lot nicer. So, works good.
And then the sweeper comes right behind.
They do a great job. Thank you on that. Also, on November 7th, I had a chance to meet with Grove Junior High students. The 7th grade students came by to visit and also had a tour with the police department and the fire department. Did a great job. And by the way, I asked the kids what they think about not having cell phones. Everyone, I said, "Do you like not having cell phones?" Everyone raised, or every single student raised their hand. Not just the teachers, the students too. And I still, as you talk, and I talked to Scott Rowe and Paul Kelly, starting next year, implement freshman can't have it. Next year's freshman sophomore. Because the kids are used to it now. I talked to my grants and all these in 7th grade. No one misses it. And I know Officer Pommey says it's made a world of difference at Grove Junior High. So the kids, when they come, just so you know, everyone in Grove Junior High School, when you go to school in the morning, you put your phone in your locker. You cannot touch it till you leave school. It has been a huge success. So these towns, they're debating, studying. It's BS. Do it. It's the best in the world. I'm trying to talk to trustee Bush, the teacher at Elk Grove High School. Get the high school to follow through with that. It makes all the world a difference. No need for the kids to have those cell phones if they don't have to. So that's an emergency. So, but anyways, the kids all like it. I was shocked. I thought for sure they could, they love it. No problem. So, they came through then on November 11th. A number of us had Veterans Day at the VFW. We appreciate them having that, that day. It went very well. Next, I want to talk a little bit about, we have a TIF hearing back on the 13th, right? Wednesday, 13th. We had a TIF hearing. Remember, part of our business park is in the TIF district. That's where the tax levy's frozen. And then anything above it goes to the village to reinvest into the village for public projects, public works, you know, to make the area better where the TIF district is. Well, we met with the taxing districts that are in the village, and we announced on the 13th that the past few years, we've been giving them $1 million of money out of the TIF district back early. In other words, we don't have to give them any money till the TIF district runs out. We started a number of years ago with our town senate TIF district giving money back. At that time, it was $300,000. Giving money back early. And all the people from the other tax districts go, "Mayor, we don't know how to count for this. No one ever gives money back early from a TIF district." I said, "Well, isn't that a great problem to have? How to account for extra money coming in?" Well, then we kicked up to $1 million a couple of years ago. Well, this year, we announced we're giving back $2.5 million early to all the government entities. So I know the townships here, they'll be getting a little extra money back early from the village. So that's a good thing. And as this village does well, as we do with the residents and the business, we also do with the other governments. We're giving back money early. So they were extremely happy. Again, they don't know how to, no one else does that. We're the only town that does something like that. So we're excited about it, and we announced that we are now giving them back more money even early. Where's Keith? Keith? Let Connor know. Keith's son Connor came up to me at the coffee with the board, made me a special bracelet. I didn't find his mayor. So let him know. I appreciate it, and Connor's a good boy, and I appreciate him doing that. Let him know. I don't forget. Okay, there it is, Connor.
And he has been wearing it.
Also, on the 20, on Friday, the 29th of November, the day after Thanksgiving, we have our 25th annual tree lighting ceremony. We had it out here in town center. Remember, we're gonna have Love and Spoonfuls. Love and Spoonfuls playing a concert. Santa's coming, fireworks. We're gonna have book holiday reading time put on by some of the trustees down in room E. Make them read fast, because they get through it too fast. They have to dance for you. So we want to make sure they're dancing. That's the word we got from Laura. You have to dance. So.
Selective reading.
So, we're gonna have that. We're gonna have a train out by the clock tower. So there'll be train rides for the little ones.
What kind of train?
A choo-choo train.
Okay.
So, not the one they used to have in displaying, they brought the hamburgers. It's a little too small. But big enough for all the kids to ride. Not the big kids, the little kids. So we have the train. We're gonna have Love and Spoonfuls, fireworks, Santa, book reading, cookies, hot chocolate, cider, all out there for you to enjoy and have a great time. And actually, everyone that comes with book reading will be getting a free book to take home with them. So, the Rotary Club donated 300 books for us to give out that day. So, we thank the Rotary Club for doing that. So that went good. We're getting there, a little bit more. I know a lot of people ask us, "What do we build at Bussy and Oakton?" And that's a new entry feature. A water feature, fountain feature. Welcome everyone to Elk Grove Village. It's right there by, no offense, Prime Data Center going in there. So that's gonna be right there, and that's what they are building over there. Couple of issues came up over the past couple of weeks, and as everyone knows, Facebook is good about 2% of the time. And 98% of the time say a lot of things. It's unfortunate, but a young lady's body was discovered in Bussy Woods a couple of weeks ago. Again, Bussy Woods, we consider part of Elk Grove. It's not in Elk Grove. Cook County's actually handling all the police matter with that. We gave assistance, I know, fire and police. It's a shame. It turned out to be, I think, a boyfriend, not a husband. Was it a boyfriend or husband?
Boyfriend.
Boyfriend. Not guilty, was arrested, and it's unfortunate, happy, happened, but I want to commend again our officers and fire department for their assistance on that. Secondly, which I know is unusual here in Elk Grove, but working on, there is a shooting that I know everyone heard about, whether it's on TV, in the paper, all that. Understand this. Our number one priority as a board, and number one priority for everyone that works for the village, is the health, safety, and welfare of every single resident and business here in Elk Grove. That's a number one priority. If we have to do anything to protect that, we will do it. So if during that or after that shooting occurred, if we felt anyone was at risk, anyone could be in a danger, we would have put out more notices, more warnings. We would have done phone calls, everything we could to put people on warning, whether they had to stay in the house, lock the doors, whatever else. As you know, our officer did on the police page, put out, you know, something occurred, but the residents were not at risk. We knew, our officers knew very quickly, there is no risk to the residents in this community. Very quickly, they knew it. So that's why we didn't do more than we did. I know a lot of people say, "Well, what's happening? What's going on?" They try to ask. We cannot tell you stuff. We cannot tell you stuff for your own safety. Not that you're at risk at that time, but for your own safety, we want to catch the perpetrators. And the more we say, the less chance we have of catching them. You follow Facebook, you follow news, all that. The bad guys do too. They're not stupid. So, have faith. We got, and I say this all the time, I say it again today, we got the finest police department out there. We back the blue 1 million percent here in Elk Grove. They do a phenomenal job. And they're doing a phenomenal job in this case too. And when everything eventually gets resolved and comes out, you will see what happens. But we got great firemen, public works, all of our people are phenomenal, top notch. So, if they tell you not to worry, don't worry. We can't say more than that. But again, Facebook does some good things, but Facebook does a lot of bad things. And scaring people is one of the worst things they do. Follow our police site, follow our stuff. We will let you know what's going on to a level. And if it's something you need to be worried about, we won't hide it from you. You'll be the first to know. The last thing I say is, modern technology is phenomenal for helping our guys. Phenomenal. So, Chief Dorn, did I speak out of turn? Anything incorrect? Okay, so, again, we're not used to stuff like that, but we do know how to handle it, and our guy's doing a great job with it. Now, this is what I want to talk a little bit with trustee Bush. If I remember correctly, it was not long ago the mayor and the village attorney bought 300 boxes of cereal, because trustee Bush said, "If we get to 2,000, we're in great shape, nothing to worry about. We're gonna win the cereal bowl. We're good to go." Now, before I go on my next thing with trustee Bush, there was a winner. And that's the people that go to the food pantry. We brought in, actually, the high school, Elk Grove, enrolled us, brought in three times as much as they've ever brought in before. That's a lot of cereal. So the contest was good, because it did serve the purpose to help the people in need.
Yes.
And they're good. But as trustee Bush and everyone else knows, the mayor never likes to lose in anything.
Yeah.
And the good news is, for people, I did not lose. Trustee Bush lost. He was the captain of the team. I was just a teammate. So, what happened?
My suspicions, but we brought in 3,200 boxes at Elk Grove High School, which the year before, we had done 2,000. And Meadows, who had never gotten higher than 1,100, showed up with 3,800 boxes. So we hit 7,000, which I think the year before total was 28 between the two schools. Now, I did have an insider on the football team that had a conversation with one said Coach Robbie Gold.
Of course.
And said, "Hey, did you play a part in this?" And I was told Robbie snickered, and that was all. So, I think a check was written in some capacity, and we're gonna, we're gonna attack it at a different angle. But we have the home field advantage. There were more picked up at the actual football game that night, right? 100. So, home field advantage might have played a little part in that.
Because they did say, "If you came with two boxes of cereal, you got in the football game free."
Exactly. And so next year, we'll be hosting it, and hopefully that 500 will swing our direction.
Well, I cannot match Robbie Gold's checkbook, Mr. Knickerbocker, but I couldn't. So, but that's fine. We learned from our shortfalls. Next year, are you making a guarantee now?
I don't guarantee anything. So I'll have to run for the hills if we don't win. But yeah, 7,000, I mean, that's incredible. So, and we are going to put together with both Rolling Meadows and Elk Grove, a video, kind of a summary of everything that we did, which will then, again, help promote it even more next year. So it's a good, you know, it's a good team effort between both schools and supporting the community.
And that's why we actually did win.
Yeah.
We all won, because we were able to help those that need the most, and that's what counts. Because I know you serve now 1,000 families a month? 1,100 families a month. That's a lot of people. And actually, we're gonna be talking about further in a few minutes. Our business community likes to step up too. So, could have used maybe a little bit of that to help with the cereal next year. We gotta think about that. Actually, I think Alliance thinking, "Well, God, that's not that much. Maybe next year, we'll probably talk to Alliance next year." We'll guarantee, I think they'll guarantee Elk Grove won't lose. I saw a thumbs up. See, the mayor knows how to box people. I'm good at this stuff. So, okay, we'll let you off the hook this year, trustee Bush. Okay, next, we sent a letter to the FAA. If you remember, last year, or actually, a year ago this month, we filed suit against the FAA in Chicago on the flight quiet program. They weren't doing quite the work they're supposed to be doing. We're not including all options, which is all we asked them to do. And so they responded last year very quickly. Told us they'd work with us. Well, here we are now again. They put out contracts, they did other items. There was supposed to be public record, and low me, "Oh, we can't find them anywhere, can we, Maggie?" No. So, we sent another warning letter. And again, all we want Chicago and the FAA to do is be fair. Study all viable plans and let the best plan win. We know, we had analysis done, what the best plan is. It's been done, it's been taken care of. We just wanted to award it, so we all get fair impact and we all get fair relief. We all benefit from the airport. We all pay a little price for the airport. So, we'll see what happens, but we're gonna stay on top of that and not start, not back down that. Second to last thing, trustee Frankie. Everyone knows a lot of things going on now with taxes, a lot of articles. There's another one. Batavia City Council looking to raise property taxes, 6.5%. Arlington Heights just raised property taxes. A lot of towns doing it. A lot of governments are panicking. Remember, government gave out their COVID money? And I guess the federal government still got $70 billion in COVID money. Here, it's four years since COVID. I don't know why it's given out, but unfortunately, governments got hooked on it, and now they're all panicking, because COVID money goes way soon. Well, you should have made that your line, money and all that. And, you know, it's tough. And it is hard out there for everyone with, you know, everything that's going on. And we have been trying to work with our community to make things better for them, to help them. And again, as I've said before, the village is doing well. It's been doing very well. Matter of fact, Mr. Rowan just gave me today, and it's public record. As you know, when you sell real estate in Elk Grove, there's 3.1% fee that is part of the sale. Well, Elk Grove just had its largest sale in its history recorded. Just under a half a billion dollar purchase of property was made in Elk Grove Village. It's actually a building that was built on industrial park. That half a billion, under a half billion dollar thing generated to Elk Grove under the real estate transfer tax, $1,318,965 to the village. Almost 1 point, over 1.3 million dollars came to the village. One sale in Elk Grove. And so, needless to say, the village is doing well. The reason I bring all this up, it's gonna make even our business people happy today, is if you remember, back in August, we gave out a $200 gift card to every household in Elk Grove. We did that because we're doing well. And one of the reasons we're doing well is a thing called data centers. Data centers are a boon for communities. They bring in tax revenue. They provide nice improvements. The buildings they build meet architecturally what the community likes to see. They don't do a lot of impact on the community. There's not a lot of fire calls, police calls, a lot of truck traffic where in the streets. It's actually very good for the community. And because it was doing so well, doing so well, we gave that gift card to every household. And because it was doing so well, doing so well, we gave that gift card to every household. There's $3 million we gave back to the taxpayers. And remember, a year before that, we gave another gift card, there's another $3 million back to the taxpayers. A year before that, we gave a $3 million water bill credit back to our residents. A year before that, we gave another water bill credit. So over the last four years, we've given $12 million directly, directly backs to our taxpayers. Because we feel that's your money going back to you. If the village is doing well, that's good, we need money to pay for the best police, the best fire, best public works. But if we're doing that well, we also want to share it back to the community. Well, tonight, we're announcing we're gonna share even more back to the community. No, not another gift card, not that much. But we're proud to announce that tonight, we're lowering our property tax. We're not freezing like we have in the past, we're actually cutting our property tax. I know it's not a millions of dollars, but it's a 2% property tax reduction. So even though inflation's still out there, your property tax to the village will be cut by 2%. So this time, we're not only helping the residents, but we're actually helping the people that pay the most in property taxes, we're helping our businesses too. So we're very excited. So we're not a town that relied on COVID to survive money, we're a town that relies on the success of the community. And we're doing very well, very well, very proud of that, and we want to share that again with the taxpayers. So tonight, we're cutting property taxes by 2%. And again, the one thing to watch, and I've talked about this before, I'll talk a little bit more about this, is one thing that impacts property tax a lot nowadays is pensions. And we gotta make sure we stay on top of that. You see the City of Chicago, Mayor Johnson there, no relation, he runs his government opposite the way I run our government. They are gonna skip some pension payments they're gonna put in, to try to hold taxes down. You can't do that, you, you got a commitment, you gotta pay it. But pensions do have to be fixed. We've always said, we honor our pensions. Anyone working for this village right now, we promised a pension when they got hired, they're gonna be guaranteed to get their pension when they retire. But I've said this a long time, new employees coming in the future, we need to look at what every private sector business does nowadays, what my own business does, is a 401K retirement plan. Pensions are becoming unsustainable. Now, that's not the fault of any of our employees, they have nothing, that's something that's been in place for decades and decades. But to show you an example of what happens, in 2000, pensions made up 18% of our property tax bill. And it was $800,000 between the police and fire pension, that's our main pensions. In 2024, pensions make up 53% of our property tax bill, and the police and fire pensions are $10 million of our property tax. They're unsustainable. And I've said this before, and I'll say it again, something's gonna need to be addressed at some point. That's the problem most towns, not most, every town has throughout this country, and something needs to be addressed. Again, we made a promise to every man and woman that took the job in Elk Grove, and we will honor that promise, they will all get their pension. But we gotta look long term for these young people sitting out there. And so that needs to be addressed at some point, it needs to be addressed soon. But we are doing well, back to the positive, we're gonna be cutting property taxes 2%. And we're very excited to be able to do that, we're honored to be able to do that for you. And we're glad. Last thing, but not least, elections. I know we just got over the presidential election, I know if you watch football games, see people doing dances and all that, I would do a dance just because it's finally over. But we have a next series of elections coming up, which is local elections. They're held on April 1st of next year. And I mean, one thing, I'm happy, if anyone saw this, if they read the Herald, they'll see it, crowded field in Homer Glen trustee spots. In Homer Glen, there's three trustee spots open. There's 17 people running for those three spots, 17. And here's why, here's what they're saying, they're going to start, this is the one elected official someone's running against, they're going to start slamming me, and I'm gonna slam them back. It's probably gonna be the dirtiest election Homer Glen has ever seen. People know how nasty this will get. If you hit me with a fist, I'm gonna hit you with a bat. That's not good government. That's one thing I'm proud of here in Elk Grove. We don't have council wars, we don't have battles like that, our school boards, our park, our library, our village, we don't have government like that. You know, it's bad enough seeing it on the federal level, and on state level, to see it now on a local level, that's sad. That's really sad. Luckily, here in Elk Grove, you don't see that. And I know sometimes people say, well, gee mayor, I don't hear you guys arguing, why would you want that? I mean, we agree to disagree, we don't always agree on everything. We talked about some things that were executive, we didn't personnel tonight, we all didn't agree about. But you know what? We all come together, it's a decision made, we're a democracy, votes are taken, unite behind the winning decision, you move on together. You don't fight like that. I mean, that's pretty sad. Nastiest election ever. I mean, what kind of town is that? That's not what we want here in Elk Grove. So we do have local elections coming up, I know District 59 Board's contested, I haven't heard about 54, 211, 214 yet. The library is not, I think we heard the park district has.
Supposed to be.
Supposed to be contested. I want to, if I may say tonight, I want to thank everyone, I'm up for reelection April 1st, no one else filed to run against me, so I thank you for the honor of being mayor again for the eighth term, and I appreciate that honor. I keep saying, it's not gonna be forever, I know it may feel like forever to some people, but it won't be forever, but I do thank you for that. But on the village trustee side, we do have a contested election. Well, if you remember, Trustee Frankie and Trustee Bush are running for reelection, Trustee Proctor's gonna be retiring, so we have one open seat, and we have two gentlemen, one has been coming to me, Keith Laskin here, he's gonna be running for it, and Jake Glimko is gonna be running, for the others, the two will be running. So we're gonna have a contested, I haven't heard Joe, Jeff, or Keith, and I didn't hear Jake, when I've talked to him, say it's gonna be the nastiest election around, that's not how we do it here in Elk Grove. We run a good election, we debate the issues, discuss it, then the winners come together, unite, move on, and every time we've had one in Elk Grove, the people that weren't successful, always congratulate the winners and support the winners. That's the way government should work. So that's gonna be happening. So we have elections coming up, pay attention, and let's make sure we keep Elk Grove proud, we don't want to be Homer Glen unappr- unapprouded. So keep that in mind, so we'll see what's going on. So with that saying are done, Mr. Frankie, not too bad?
Oh, I think I went through election already.
But at least you gained 2% money back to make it up for you.
I'm very happy about that.
Okay. We got a couple of things, we got some awards to give out tonight, and we got a check presentation to give out. So we'll start first, the Lions Club, wanna come down and join me? We'll work on that first. Lions and Leos Club, right?
New Cubs program.
I do what now?
Cubs program just launched last Wednesday, so we have an additional club.
Well, you can talk about it. All yours. Introduce yourself and who you got here tonight.
So my name is Sabrina Swanson, I am the Leo and now Cub Advisor for Elk Grove Village, which you see, some of our children here, we have a Leo and our new Cubs. So this here is Esther, Gerardo, Samuel. We service of, just like our Lions, we have Lion Leonor, Barb, Debbie, Zarapa, Beth, everyone should know Beth, and Matt. What's great with the Leos and Cubs and the Lions in Elk Grove Village, it's family. We have parents with the kids, we like to serve our community, we like to do projects with the village. They're learning leadership skills, teaching each other, learning how to work together. They agree to disagree also already at a young age, but they work it out. They map out plans to help those in need, they've adopted seniors, they've done pet food supplies for the township, we've worked with the township. One of our Cubs went ahead and did a peace poster. So we're here to serve. You're looking at the future right here.
So you have a contest, we do two a year, one for Halloween, and one for Christmas.
Yep.
Okay. So tonight, we're celebrating the Halloween award winners, a house decorating contest that we do, and I know a few could not make it.
Correct.
So we're gonna give that to take with you. Well, why don't you introduce the ones that couldn't make it tonight, they were here, why don't you introduce the ones that couldn't make it, and the names, if you want to, and hold up, and then Channel 6 will get it. So this will be for the outstanding use of decorations on a condo or an apartment, and the winner is the?
Her name is Tara Bruderson, and she won that category.
She lives on Perry Drive. Okay? So that's, we'll put it there.
Okay.
This one is for the outstanding overall Halloween theme, I'll give you that, you got that for the family.
Okay. This one, now keep in mind, we had the children with us, the Cubs and Leos, so to see their faces, that helped us judge. And also when they would scream, when coffins would open, and we're all screaming, because they're screaming. This one here was the winner, he is on Dover Lane, his name is Mike Kozewski, I'm sure I slaughtered that, I apologize. This was the outstanding overall Halloween theme. I hope everyone out there, you guys got a chance and went and looked at these homes, the village maps it out, it makes it easy, these homes were amazing, all of them.
Okay. And last is outstanding child-friendly display.
Yeah. You wanna read this? So say who the winner was and their name.
Um, the winner was Josh and Jackie. And they live on Ridge Avenue.
Okay, so we'll make sure, actually, Sabrina, make sure that they get the awards, and we appreciate them participating, they did a great job. I mean, it's phenomenal. But we do have one winner here tonight.
Yes.
So I'll let you go ahead.
Okay. This was amazing, we screamed when, we screamed, every one of us, good thing we weren't having hot chocolate that night, otherwise it would have been all over in our cars. This one was a great partnership, the two homes were together, neighbors, 920 and 924 on Cass Lane, Joe Loush, or Lucy, again, forgive me on the last name. Amazing. We never laughed so hard when that one body came flying out at us, and we're like, what? Come on, all the way down. There you go. Thank you so much, this was amazing, whose idea was it?
Wait, come out over here by the speaker.
Whose idea was it?
She tells me what to build.
Very creative, very creative. You get the plaque, and we thank you.
Well, hey, come on up here, come on up here. So where, where do you come up with your ideas? Your dad builds it, but where do you come up with the ideas?
Um, I just like, suddenly, just like, I don't know, I think of Halloween as like, like scare and like jumps, so like, then like, I just like picture that, and then somehow I just like imagine all the.
You tell your dad to build it?
Yeah. I just like take a piece of paper and pencil, I just, and like.
It's, it's our, her aunt, our aunt that lives next door.
Oh, okay. So it works out great together.
Yes.
How long's it take you? Now, let me see, hang on a second, if Channel 6 and Zoom in, that is quite detailed, that is a lot of, how long's it take you to put it together, get it up, and?
Probably around 120 man-hours.
Wow, so it takes a lot of work.
A lot of the stuff we build throughout the year, so.
And then you keep it?
Right.
What do you got, store in your garage all of?
Yes, I make some extra storage up in the, in the attics and stuff, so.
So you watch out the windows, people come by and getting scared?
We have cameras and stuff, so.
You enjoy it? What's your first name, Chief?
Uh, Gianna.
Now, what grade are you in?
Fifth.
What school do you go to?
Uh, Link Elementary.
Okay. Fifth, you're a talker, you play sports?
Yeah.
What do you play?
Dance.
Dance? Oh, good for you, okay. So you enjoy doing something like that? Now, you guys do anything for the holidays, or?
Yeah, we're actually, we're working on Christmas as we speak, so.
Now, you helping design that one too?
Yeah.
Now, you don't understand a jumping out of people. Okay, well, you did a great job, we're gonna congratulate you, and, did you get, did you get a picture of him? You got it, it's good? Well, give you some chocolates for your hard work. These are the chocolate logos, if you hold the plaque like that, we'll put it right there.
Oh, my gosh.
There you go. Did a great job, we want to thank you for being part, shall I give your dad one too? Okay, congratulations. Good job, thank you very much. Who's your fifth grade teacher?
Uh, Ms. Kozak.
Because Mrs. Bush's wife teaches at Link School.
Yeah, I know her.
Okay. Is she a good teacher? Yeah. Much better than Mr. Bush?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Good job. Oh, you got it, he'll get it for you. Okay, good job. And for all the Lions and Leos, make sure we take care of all of you, thank you for helping. Oh, yeah, we don't forget that. Are they coming in? Okay. Okay, come here. Barbara's gives an update on what's going on, they're already getting hairdressers for the Christmas lighting. Um, so, hang on. Pardon? Oh, there you go.
Just to let you all know, we had 32 entries for the Halloween house decorations, and they were all fantastic. We right now have already started accepting entries for the holiday house decorations, we've got five to date, they're in the Elk Grove news section on their website, so just feel free to look, it'll tell you how to contact us and get your entries in prior to December 7th. Thank you.
So what day do you judge?
We'll start judging on Monday, the 9th through the 17th.
And if they don't get their name in, they can't be part of it.
They have to be in prior to the 7th. Thank you.
You're welcome, good job. And let's give a big hand to the Lions Club too. Thank you very much. Okay, now, I'm gonna ask Paul and Isabella, come on up, from Elk Valley, and I'd like to ask our friends from the Lions data centers, come on up. Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. Ah, no, you're good. Okay. So who, you gonna speak on behalf? Like, okay, come on, where the other guy, oh, here they come, took the wrong one. Okay, and I talked about before, we are the data center capital of Midwest. And one reason we're the data center capital of Midwest is, we've got everything they like. We got fiber optics, we're by O'Hare Airport, we got all the major expressways, we got water, we got, well, more combat would be nice, but we're trying to get as much combat as we can, power and stuff, but we got everything they want when it comes to data centers, and you got a community that embraces them, that's got the staff, that knows how to work with them to be successful, right? I mean, you go to some towns, they go, golly, what's a data center? Our people know them, understand them, and they work well with you to get them built and done. Because you understand this, these data, they had almost half a billion dollar land purchase, that was for a data center site here in Elk Grove, I won't say which one, but that's what it was, that's when generate the money to us, half a billion for a data center site. This is a big investment they make when they come to a community. Remember, that investment, that creates jobs. That's jobs for workers building the place, when people have to run it, take care of it, that's jobs for the community, that's investment a lot of dollars, tax revenue and stuff. Some of these data centers, well, as you know, Microsoft is here building, when Microsoft first came to Elk Grove and talked to me about five, six years ago, they told me that when they're all done with the three buildings, with the equipment and all that, it could be close to a $10 billion investment. $10 billion. These data centers are huge investments in communities, and we're extremely grateful for it. But also, what's great about them is, they're also big partners with the communities they're in. And that's why Alliance is here today. Alliance is the one that's at Northwest Point, so if you're going down Arlington Heights Road, before you get to the tollway, you see that big building going up, that's the new Alliance data center. And they got more land, next to it, they tore down the old OpTum, was it called OpTum? Office? Co-op. Co-optum. They tore that down and they also own ADP, the white building behind. So when they're done, they're going to have a big campus right there in Elk Grove. And all we say to them, we say thank you. Because that's a nice investment back in this community. But with that all said, they also want to make a donation type. So I have Paul and Isabella from the Elk Grove Township Food Pantry. And they're going to make a presentation and check, so it's all yours. Entice all the folks with you.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for having us. We're very excited to be part of the community. Uh, not only for, um, the tax rebate, so thank you for that. We'll probably help you with the cereal boxes next year. So thank you. But we, we're very committed to the community that we, we work in. So not only right now with the, the food pantry that we're donating some money towards, but as we go forward, we do a lot of work with the high school kids. We show them there's a path to a new career in digital infrastructure. We do a lot of internships. We do a lot of tours. So as we start ramping up in the, in the, uh, the build process, if you'd like to come and have a tour as we're, we're building that through, just let us know and we can arrange that, make it very safe for you. But thank you. And, um, we have, uh, some of my colleagues here. This gentleman here, part of JT Megan. Uh, Mike, he's actually building it for us. And, uh, Tony, Tony's actually part of Alliance. He's responsible for the construction for us as we build. And Joanna, she's our, uh, Chief Marketing Officer. She actually grew up in Schaumburg, so she's local, um, knows a lot about this community. But thank you, and thank you, ma'am.
And Schaumburg, just so you know, Schaumburg's Elk Grove's favorite summer. So, you love Schaumburg, no problem there. Well, we think, wait, where are you going? Isabelle, Paul?
Oh, yeah.
We'd like to present this to you. And thank you for what you do. And we'll carry on working with you.
Now, just over those, that's a $16,000 check. They're giving to a food pantry. 16,000, yeah, we'll do in a second. So remember, that's great for the food pantry and think of how much they're going to help us next year with that cereal bowl. So I'm not worried at all next year. Why don't we step up front and get a picture?
Channel Six doesn't like it. There we go.
Well, I want to thank you all. First off, you want to talk about your food pantry, go help me. Come on.
Well, you've covered a lot of it. Um, we did hit a high level this past month with 1,100 families that we serve. It's not 1,100 people, it's 1,100 families that we've served. And we've been serving over 1,000 families a month for the, probably the last six, eight months or more. So, uh, the, the food pantry is really growing. Uh, we get a lot of, uh, cooperation and assistance with, uh, things like, uh, dealing with the Greater Chicago Food Depository, which were a big, uh, proponent, uh, proponent of ours and that we get food from. Um, we go out and pick up food from the grocery stores that is expiring or, you know, it's, uh, the, the stores don't want to sell it. Um, maybe there's a bruised apple or something and we'll get a five-pound bag with one bad apple in it. So we can use that to give to the community. And we're always looking for different things to do to be able to, uh, provide to the people that come into the food pantry. But we do more than just food. We have, uh, non-food items that we get. Uh, we're, we're working on a, um, toy, uh, distribution right now that we had somebody contact us, one of the companies that we deal with. And we got a semi-load of toys, so we'll be giving those away to the community. And, uh, our Thanksgiving program, uh, will be serving probably about 1,000 boxes of, um, Thanksgiving food for, uh, the people that come to the food pantry. So those are the main things we're doing. Uh, did I leave anything else? No? Yeah, but we appreciate what you did and, and, uh, the, the mayor Laura from, uh, Rolling Meadows to help get the, uh, thing going because, you know, Joe's been pushing us a long time at the school and, and, uh, you know, we couldn't do it without both schools and everybody that participates in it. Because that really makes us feel good when we can have that stock in the back room and we know because either older people that maybe want to have a bowl of cereal as opposed to a big meal or have family with kids, it's an easy thing for them to do. So, um, we really push that and, uh, we're happy that the communities, both communities and everybody outside the community actually still, um, continue to, to, uh, help us with all those things, so...
Well, what people don't, people forgive, you know, the village is doing well, but there's families that aren't doing so well. In Elk Grove or in Arlington Heights or Mount Prospect, towns around there, part of Elk Grove Township. And, you know, we can't forget those people. And we have fun sometimes, we joke around with a ball, but it did do a lot of good. Think about it, because we promoted it, there's no question, me throwing the gauntlet down that one day, fired up and I'm sure, you know, the coach, uh, Gould, uh, had no problem wanting to make sure he didn't lose Elk Grove. So, you know, next we got our secret weapon over there, so I'm not worried. But, but it's, you know, all kidding aside, it really did a great thing. Think about it, 7,000, three times as many boxes. And as Paul said, you're getting three times as many people now than you got before, so this makes it... Isabelle, go ahead.
So Paul's being shy. Um, the Township Cereal Bowl has been officially dedicated to the Paul P. X. Cereal Bowl, um, because Paul came up with it about nine years ago. Um, and the township was serving about 50 people probably at that time out of a little closet in our old building. So when we moved into the new building and we started to see, uh, an influx of people coming to the pantry, those boxes that the schools were collecting were making a difference, but they weren't going to make a huge difference to the 1,000 families that we're serving right now. So when we were collecting maybe 1,300 boxes, 2,000 boxes last year, we were very happy about it, but we were seeing 700, 1,000 people, um, in the food pantry per month. And you can think about that. So we're serving fixed-income seniors. Fixed-income seniors really love cereal. It's sometimes a morning meal, but sometimes a dinner meal. We're also feeding low-income families, so you're having a lot of kiddos in one household. It's a quick snack in the morning. It's sometimes the snack after school and oftentimes it's dinner. So when we had, you know, 200 people coming through the food pantry and 1,000 or 2,000 boxes being donated, that would last us the entire year. But shortly after that, now we're seeing 1,000 households a month. That, that cereal wasn't going to make as big of a dent. This year, we were blown away. Um, it was an amazing number when we put those numbers together and we were able to present the winner, um, at the actual football game. Those kiddos, they didn't care who won. They were so proud of themselves. And so that's what really matters. So I just, the $16,000 is amazing. Thank you, and I want you to know that it really goes a long way. Um, same thing with the board. Every time you guys come to one of our events, particularly the mayor and the trustees, people really, really respond to that. Um, and we've seen an influx of donations in general. Um, this year, we asked for $14,000 for Thanksgiving donation boxes and I think we're at 11,000 today? Yeah, so we're just a little bit short of our goal and we will be making those 1,000, um, boxes and distributing them to everybody who comes to, to the food pantry. So thank you. Um, and Paul, thank you for creating the cereal bowl and countless other amazing things that he did for the pantry. So thank you for this.
Everyone, thank you. Give him a big hand. It's our actual logo on there. It's the logo that's up there.
Will they take, Craig, do you know? They'll take this to the drive-up?
Well, here's a key, you know, here's a key. I always check. Take it anywhere you want.
That's funny. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. Appreciate it. Come on, Craig. Come up there. Come on back. So we can go. He's talking too much.
Oh. You're observing that now?
As your folks back there, if you want to go now, you're by all means, you can stay, well, you can go now. You want to do.
Yeah, I gotta drink your water.
Thank you.
Probably, we're going to be here another five hours.
Okay, well, let the folks get going there for a second. That last half hour's done.
Actually, that's the good part of the meeting, where we're giving money to people that actually need it, right?
Okay. I got you now a helper next year, Joe. No excuse next year. Alliance ready, they're ready. Take a tour and get the box. Okay, then go, go on, trustees report. We'll start with trustee Schmidt.
Okay. On November 3rd, I was had the honor of representing the mayor and the village board at an Eagle Scout ceremony for Michael McLovich from Troop...
Milovich.
What?
Milovich.
From Troop, uh, Troop 95. I gotta say 495, that's mine, yeah. Troop 95, it was the first time we had a Eagle Scout in quite, quite a while here. But they told me that there are other, uh, uh, other scouts that are ready to do their Eagle project, so we should have some more coming down the pipe in the next several months, at least two.
Two more than I know of.
Yeah, at least two.
And just, would you add how many Eagle Scouts we've had?
Sam, Melissa and I used to keep count. I believe we're, we're probably around 150 now, easily.
Isn't that amazing?
In Elk Grove Village. So, and also on, um, November 11th, attended the VFW, uh, ceremony with the mayor and trustee Prochnow to, um, remember all those who gave the ultimate sacrifice and to, uh, thank those who, uh, who served in our military. On Wednesday, November 13th, former, uh, retired deputy chief Ray Rose and I testified in front of a member of the Illinois parole board, a case, a case involving Patricia Colombo. We provided testimony and there was also evidence that over 190 letters and emails were received from residents in the community. Uh, most of them obviously are, um, uh, requesting that Patty not be paroled. And the next step now is Thursday, uh, retired deputy chief Rose and I are going to be leaving like 5:00 in the morning here. We're driving down to Springfield to attend the parole hearing at 9:00 o'clock. So we will know Thursday morning if the parole board will hear the case and they will vote on it. So we're hoping that they will vote to keep her in and we're asking for a three-year stay. So it finally went, just took, just took a year and a half to get this far. They kept on postponing the hearing.
What do you think?
My gut feeling is that, um, you know, you just never know with the parole board, but based on some things that have happened over the past year with the parole board, I'm hoping that they will keep her incarcerated.
It's a shame, she shouldn't be around this long.
I know, but we'll know Thursday morning.
Okay. Trustee Jerich.
Um, I wanted to mention that, um, one of our pillars in the community, Nancy Carlson, passed away. Many of you may have known her. Um, she was very active here in the village. Um, she was 84 years old and, um, she is best known, and I'm, I'm going to quote you, Mary Johnson, um, she was a fixture in the village government, she was a fixture in the community, and the biggest thing is she was a fixture in our business park. So when we think about the success of our business park, it definitely was built on some shoulders and Nancy was one who was the liaison from the village to the different businesses in the business park. Um, so I, I think it's fitting and appropriate that we honor and remember her, um, legacy to the village. Um, she also, from a Channel Six standpoint, had her own TV show called Strictly Business. And that was another way she focused on, um, highlighting businesses in the community, which then evolved into, uh, the podcasts that we have today. So I did attend her wake and, um, to her family, we extend our, our deepest sympathies. Um, on November 6th, I attended an interfaith council meeting and I just want to remind everybody that, um, interfaith council is hosting a, um, interfaith, uh, Thanksgiving, uh, uh, ceremony, or I, I shouldn't say ceremony, but service. It will be Monday, the 25th, from 6:00 to 7:00 at Our Lady of the Blessed Sacrament, um, most popularly known as St. Jillian's Church. And no matter what faith background you have, you're invited to come. It's a very ecumenical time for us to remember and be grateful for all the things we have in our community. Um, I too attended a Veterans Day event at the high school and I want to thank, uh, trustee Bush and his high school students for hosting an amazing breakfast for all the veterans. And it's quite powerful to be in the gymnasium with the student population and to see them, um, give honor and do to all the veterans who are present. Um, I think it's a great thing, uh, that the students hear from speakers and become enthusiastic about, um, service to our country. So thank you. Um, and lastly, I just want to say, um, the pads program that's going on here in the village is going very well. Um, last Sunday, um, we had 39 participants. Um, they are, they do have a website where you can donate and be a part of. Um, you go to cvlutheran.org. That's Christus Victor Lutheran Church here in Elk Grove. Go under their Ministries tab and to pads. Um, they would appreciate contributions to meals and things like that, but you can also make a monetary donation. Um, we go through a lot of plastic cups and, um, we're in need of toothbrushes and toothpaste. And, you know, being around some of the guests who come, um, I met someone who works for Papa John's Pizza. And he's held his job there for two years and, but he still isn't in a home. Um, I met another person who was a landscaper. And, um, again, working and managing, but not able to live, um, you know, afford rent and things like that. So the guests that come are really, um, they're connected to the Journeys program in Palatine. So they're on a path to make themselves more independent, but right now, they're going through hard times. Um, so if you find it in your heart to volunteer or serve, go to cvlutheran.org and look it up. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, I'll be at the thing on Monday night. I've got the proclamation I'll be bringing with me on that. Um, and yeah, Nancy was special. She set the trend for us, having a, uh, economic development person. Chuck Zadik brought her on board and she did a good job. And, um, I was going to say something else. I can't remember what I wrote in here. I'll leave it later. Um, okay, trustee Prochnow.
Thank you. Um, on Friday, November 8th, I also attended the, the breakfast and assembly at Elk Grove High School. Uh, I can't remember exactly how many years ago this started, Joe.
This is year 11.
Year 11. And before that, everybody had the day off for Veterans Day and the students stayed home and they had a holiday and they knew nothing about what Veterans Day was all about. And now we have this wonderful breakfast and assembly where the, the veterans come from the village and from surrounding communities and are honored for the service that they provided. So I want to thank Joe and his associates for putting this together. Uh, and on, um, Veterans Day itself, Monday, November 11th, I attended the post 9284 and the ladies auxiliary hosted their Veterans Day observation. And it's always very moving to see them out. They do it outside by the flagpole and their military guards shoot off the guns. And it just, it gives you, gives you goosebumps and makes you realize what the ultimate sacrifice is and that some of these veterans have sacrificed a lot to keep, to preserve our freedom. And then thirdly, uh, the Elk Grove Winter Farmers Market has opened. It's, it's open the first and third Saturday of the, of the month. It is located at the Christus Victor Lutheran Church, 1045 South Arlington Heights Road. And it runs from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on the first and third Saturdays of the month. So if you have a chance to go by, come, come check them out. They're working on it, they're growing, they're, uh, different vendors and hoping to get some more vendors to join up for the rest of the winter. On a sad note, uh, there will be no farmers, summer farmers market in 2025, where the village and, and the vendors are taking a little pause. Uh, this previous summer was a challenging one for vendors and for attendance. And Connie Groot and her daughter Monica, Monica Meyer, have done a fabulous job of running the summer market, but they're dealing with some, some challenges for themselves and it's, we've just agreed that we're going to take a pause and there will be no summer market in 2025. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Frankie.
No report.
Trustee Miller.
Thank you. Um, I'm hearing that the theme tonight is we're here to serve. And I have three examples of, um, people serving our village and it really does make us exceptional. I was fortunate... I was fortunate enough to attend a Community Character Coalition recognition for a young girl who attends Village Point Church. Her father happens to be the pastor there. Her name is Anna Nogera, and when Anna and her father were in another suburb, but they were at a big box store, and they came out, and Anna saw a homeless person, and she said to her father, "How can I help? How can I help people that don't have what I have?" And so she went to her church, and she said, "This is my plan. I'd like to make a bag for people that don't have what I have." And so on November thirteenth, several of us from the CCC attended their church, and we honored Anna with a certificate and a check to continue doing what she's doing. And then we joined the church and bagged ninety of these bags for homeless people, and it says, "Love your neighbor," and in here are gloves, scarves, water, cereal, hand warmers, and granola bars. And then the church does take these bags, and if you're in a neighboring suburb where you see people standing on the street, you can give them things that they need, not just money, but things that they need. So we recognized Anna for caring, and I was extremely proud of her. She's just a young girl doing exceptional things. Speaking of other churches that do those kinds of things, Prince of Peace United Methodist Church does a backpack program for an elementary school here in the village, and they serve children that don't have enough food on the weekends. So they take and bring backpacks to the school, and it is anonymously given out. So it's another program that we're serving those less fortunate. And then finally, speaking of Byrd School, they are doing some tremendous things. They decided, Byrd Elementary, third graders recently participated in helping the packages for patriots by writing notes to the soldiers, messages filled with gratitude for our soldiers, handwritten letters, colorful pictures, and it was just amazing that their kindness then generates to the soldiers that are deployed. So I just want to thank all of the people that are giving back to the community, because it makes us exceptional. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Bush.
Couple of quick things. We had a blood drive at Elk Grove High School on the sixteenth, collected thirty-one units of blood, and I know we have another one coming up in the village.
I've got that.
Oh, you'll cover that?
Yeah.
In a little bit, but we're gonna try to host another one in the spring, so if you can't do the village one, you'll be able to come to Elk Grove High School and do it as well. To piggyback on Kathy's point of PADS, so they have a sign-up genius now, and in terms of food, you can make food, or sometimes they just need supplies, and you can drop those off like Friday before, like last week, they just needed milk and cheese, and you can do that, so it's an easy way to give back if you don't want to make any hot meal. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Accounts payable warrant, first one for October thirty-first, 2024.
I move that we approve the accounts payable warrant for October thirty-first, 2024, in the amount of eight million, seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-three cents.
Second? We have motion by trustee Prochnow, second by trustee Miller. Lori, can you call the roll?
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Jerish.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow.
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt.
Aye.
Trustee Bush.
Aye.
Motion passes six-nothing. Speaking of October thirty-first, we had quite a Halloween this year.
We did.
We had more people than we've had in a long time. It worked out very well. Amazing how many older kids, too.
And you did not come to my house and get free cookies.
I know, you called, but I was done, the grandkids were gone.
I had lots of cookies.
I should've gotten in the car and drove over.
He was terrorizing our neighborhood.
Yeah, trustee Frankie didn't, and Mary didn't even know it was me.
No.
I snuck through this year.
You did, because you blended in with the kids.
I had a good backbone, I was running with them.
Yes.
I was running with the kids. Okay, accounts payable warrant for November nineteenth, 2024.
I move that we approve the accounts payable warrant for November nineteenth, 2024, in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-six cents.
We have motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion on trustee Prochnow, second by trustee Miller, without objection, court votes presented, six to nothing. And I did deck to dress up, as you all see. So sixty-four straight years, I decked, dressed up, kicked, and it was so good, you didn't recognize me.
Yes, you looked like a human being.
Yeah, nice try. Okay, move on to contingent, that's not funny, Mr. Knickerbocker.
Oh.
You're not laughing, are you?
No.
I can show him your tie again for me, too.
I want to hear this one.
A contingent item is A as in what, Mr. Knickerbocker?
Actor.
Actor. This is a hard one, through double H.
I know one.
Helen Hunt.
Oh.
Good one.
Actor. She's an actor.
Oh, actress.
No, they're called actors.
Actor now. Where have you been?
Actress anymore.
They still have the Best Actor, Best Actress Award at the Academy Awards. Yes, they do.
They do.
That's true.
So why are they called actresses?
Do you still go stewardess, too, because it's flight attendant? Just want to update you on the new lingo.
See, you wanted the teacher, you wanted the teacher, you got the teacher.
You don't have stewardesses and stewards?
Flight attendants.
Flight attendants.
Flight attendants.
You go on a plane so often.
Yeah.
Is that why they show me on the way back all the time when they get on a plane? It's that guy again, put him back there.
We should get a private jet with all this money we got coming in.
That's right. A line can pay for it.
There you go. Thanks, guys.
Like, we're gonna build a wall around Elk Grove, make Schaumburg pay for it? We'll buy a jet, make a line pay for it.
Okay, are you using Helen Hunt or not?
Okay.
Okay.
Where are we?
So we have A through double H, can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Jerish, any questions, comments? Anybody in the audience who wants to talk about the contingent items? Seeing none, hearing none, court votes presented, six to nothing, there's no irregular agenda? Plan commission, Mr. Romo, Arone, my bad. Mr. Romo.
Two and a half years.
Seven, it's been seven years.
And nothing under zoning board.
Well, this time on plan commission, we won't act on tonight, but last night.
Correct.
The affordable senior housing unit came before the plan commission, that's why it's going to the old Dr. Riggs building site behind Toppa, and it passed nine to nothing. Nine to nothing. So that's a Festivus miracle in itself. So that's good, and that should be coming in, Maggie, in December?
December.
So remember, what's gonna happen, and for special people that are interested in it, it's gonna come in December. They won't get notice if they get their grant funding until probably June or July, and actually, it might take two years, you were saying?
I think he was saying, maybe they would start in, yeah, the spring of 2027?
You mean twenty-six?
No, twenty-six, sorry.
Okay, so they get the funding next summer and start in the next spring?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're excited about it. As I told Richard and the group, we will not slow them down, and we haven't. Jared, your department, and everyone's done a great job working with them, and so we're very excited about it. It's gonna be thirty-one units, right there, mostly one-bedroom, a couple two-bedroom, and right in center of town, something we sorely need, some affordable senior housing. So we're excited they're coming, and that's, speaking of interfaith, that was from the interfaith council meeting.
Right.
And look how fast we took care of it. We did that very day.
We did.
So hopefully, they're happy with us on that.
Oh, extremely.
Good. Okay, move on now, we're done with Mr. Roan. We'll move on now to recycling waste committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Flinke.
Well, you stole my leaf collection thing, because it had to be part of your talk.
I like watching that thing, isn't it cool? The whole thing?
Well, you have two of those that do it.
It's cool watching that thing, they do a great job.
Yeah, so is watching paint dry, too.
Hey, trust me, Mayor McLeod Hoffens still thinks we're crazy to do it.
Well.
But we do it.
That's why we're winning all the time.
We can't help but win.
Yeah.
And I am working on the next commercial.
I bet you are.
Oh, boy.
I'm working on it.
As an actor, you'll be able to do that.
No, don't.
Actors Guild.
I gotta be careful, because both Tom Cruise and Brad Pitt filed charges or rules, because I'm not in the Actors Guild.
Mm-hmm.
But I said, "Well, I'm an actress, not an actor," so therefore, you'll be okay. Go ahead.
All right, back to leaves. So you know, this is the final week of the regular schedule. Next week, if your pickup was Thursday or Friday, Thanksgiving, and the day after, the tree lighting, you're gonna be picked up Monday and Tuesday of next week. So there will be no pickup on Friday, or Thursday or Friday. Are we doing an extra one? Do we decide that, or when?
Weather-related, right?
We're not gonna have any meeting before that, so.
I think we're have to play it by ear.
Okay, so.
Weather permitting.
We'll post on the village website if we're gonna pick up an extra week in December, like December second.
First, if we do it, it'll be the first week after Thanksgiving.
Okay, so we'll put it on the village website and on social media, just in case, because there won't be time, or we can even post a note on Channel Six.
Or you can go out with a wet vac and pick them up to help.
I could do that, too. Okay, so that's about the leaf pickup, and also, it's that time of year where everybody's gonna be pulling out, some people have their Christmas lights lit up already. Thanksgiving hasn't happened.
Another Festivus miracle.
No, I know. Well, you're going through your lights, and they're not working, which is usual. Don't throw them in the garbage, we recycle them here, you can bring them all in, we have garbage, or actually, the big green bins, that you can come in and put them right outside engineering department. So they can be recycled, so don't throw them in the trash, bring them here if they're not working, and we will take care of that. Even starting now, up until, I think we do it until April first, so people sometimes take a while to get them down, so, that's all I have.
Bring your Easter lights, too. I have Easter lights.
I'm sure you do.
I have Valentines, Easter, St. Patrick lights, Fourth of July lights.
That's why we can't get more power for data centers, because you're running too many lights.
That's why I can't let those, I make a lot of money. Do you like the new ones, the new this year? Like the new ones we have, green or red?
I, I just see the glow from the other block.
Okay. Judiciary planning zoning committee, trustee Prochnow.
No report.
Capital improvements committee, trustee Schmidt.
No report, but I do have a question about the leaves. How long will the dumpsters be out at the public works facilities?
December fifteenth.
Yeah, because I use those, my pickup day was on Wednesday, it was always windy, so I filled up bags and dumped them over there, it comes in very handy, so you can also dump the leaves over at the public works facilities. Other than that, no report.
Okay. Cable television committee, trustee Jerish.
No report.
Youth committee, trustee Bush.
No report.
Holy cow. Must be a bewitching hour.
And it'll change. And it'll change. Next one, it'll change.
Okay, no, there's no information, committee, we want the business, all information committee if we have to.
It's got an essay here.
Thank you. So the village, the CCC, which is the Community Character Coalition, the Park District and the library are all collecting unwrapped new toys for Toys for Tots. If you look out here in the village hall, holy moly, it's amazing.
Please do.
It's great, yes. So that is for the Marines Toys for Tots, and that collection will continue until December thirteenth. We received word from the Marines that last year Elk Grove Village was the highest collection center that they had had, and.
We never get tired of winning.
We never get tired of winning, I was just gonna say that. And so we want to continue winning for these kids, so please, continue to bring, no stuffed animals, they really don't want those, but new toys unwrapped for children for the Marines Toys for Tots. Please check out EGTV Facebook page, because you'll see trustee Jerish on there talking about the newsletter. She is on the Facebook page, she's part of the information committee, as well as trustee Bush, and you'll see him later on as it gets posted. Yeah.
Debbie worked really, really hard on my segment.
You did.
No, Debbie did. She made me look marginal.
They called me the one-take wonder.
I was not that person.
So just check out the Facebook page on EGTV Facebook. This is Crash Responder Safety Week, and those people who respond to traffic situations along the side of the road, please remember to slow down, move over, be aware of your situation, because that's when other incidents happen. So this is the week for Crash Responder Safety Week. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Speaking of winning, you know, Jeff, the other day, we're winning so much, people are saying, "Please, please, we can't take it anymore." This is what happens.
No, that's your reports, that's what they say.
Business leaders for trustee Schmidt.
Yeah, two reports, one on November sixth, we visit the Edlong Company over on Scott Street. They have two companies, they have two buildings on Scott Street and one on King. If you've ever been in the area of King and Higgins, you have that sweet smell in the air, that's from Edlong. They provide food flavoring, and you don't think about it, but I have a can of Pepsi here, and you take a look at Pepsi or Coke, and you think about, well, they got their water in there, their seltzer, and then they got their carbonated water, and then they have their syrups, but they also have different flavoring, and that's what makes them unique. And they do flavoring for all kinds of foods, and they work with companies from all over the world, and they had a little demonstration for us, they gave us four little packets of, it was like a granola bar, one with no flavoring, and then a little bit of flavoring, a little bit more, and then the final product. So what they do is they have labs there, and when somebody comes with a food product, a company, they will work with the company to figure out what type of food flavoring is gonna be the best, that tastes the best for its customers. So it's a very busy company, they've been in business since nineteen fourteen, they moved to Elk Grove in nineteen sixty-three, and Sue Dees and I were talking to them, they were looking at possibly consolidating into one facility, they want to stay in Elk Grove Village, so we may be talking with them in the future about combining it to one large facility for them, but it's a very interesting company. The other one I went to was on November fifteenth, the ribbon-cutting ceremony at VIP Home Theater over on Bonnie Lane. This was a very unique company, they provide in-home theaters for homes, and this system they have is unbelievable. The owner of the company grew up in communist Poland, and he moved here to the United States, and he got interested in sound. And he developed a sound system, it was in this room that you can make, you know, into your home, like a home theater, he had fifty different speakers, and they're all hidden. So when the sound was, he was playing different movies for us, segments of movies, and you couldn't tell where the speakers were, but the sound was just unbelievable, and he only had it at one percent of its capacity. He said if he turned it up to a hundred percent, the building would come down. That's how powerful these systems are. And this is something new, and we welcome them into the village, and we wish them much success. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Health and Community Services, trustee Prochnow.
Thank you. I would like to remind you of the upcoming blood drive on Saturday, December fourteenth, here at Village Hall, from eight AM to one PM in Room E. Room E is where we did the early voting in. Residents can make an appointment by calling eight-seven-seven-two-five-eight-four-eight-two-five, or visiting www.vitalant.org. More information can be found at www.ellgrove.org/blooddrive. Walk-ins are always welcome, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel committee, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Airport update, already discussed, and mayor's report, parade committee, our next meeting is not till April, first Monday in April, so that's done. Midsummer concert, classic series. Sorry, Mr. Robb, we were supposed to be able to hopefully announce it by tonight, but we're hoping for December, the lineup for this year's summer concert. For your line, folks, last year, we had the Beach Boys on the Fourth of July, we had, what, Martina McBride, we had Bret Michaels.
At the end.
At the end, we have nothing but the biggest acts.
Four Tops.
Four Tops came last year, so if you're around, we have great concerts in the month of July here in Elk Grove. We've got, we've had, we're foreigner, Kenny Loggins, Bret Michaels, we had, I mean, we had Mario Speedwagon, Peter Sotera.
Three Dog Night.
Three Dog Night, Kenny Rogers.
BJ Thomas.
BJ Thomas, so we've run on great shows, if you're ever around in the summertime, let your people know, come on by. Special events, we talked about, there are tree lighting coming up a week from Friday, we're reporting, no report, liquor commission, Mr. Manager, any report?
No report.
How about for Mr. Romo, does he have one?
I have a query. Does he have one?
Okay. Village clerk, Lori.
No report.
They had record voter turnout.
Yes, we did, for early voting.
Almost eight thousand, right? Almost eight thousand, right?
I have it here.
Wow.
Buried, but I haven't.
Hang on, I just got the numbers.
Just make one up.
Sorry, I don't have it.
It's okay, it was almost eight thousand.
Yeah.
Probably the most.
We're good. Oh, so we, of course, we're always number one.
We never get tired.
We can't help but win. Please, please, I'm getting tired of winning. Report from, no, wait a minute, Mr. Knickerbocker, there's nothing under you as usual? No? So any new business items tonight for any trustees? Anybody in the board, or audience who wants to address the board? Helen, how are we doing tonight?
Doing fine. The senior center is having a luncheon tomorrow for the veterans that signed up this pretty much.
Oh, that's nice, for the veterans there? That's good. They probably have leftover tacos we had from our taco thing. Okay, anybody else? Keith, you getting ready to work? Got to start knocking on those doors.
I definitely am.
Knock, knock, knock.
It's one of the best meetings, a lot of giving back on here, it's been really great.
Thank you.
No, don't butter them up.
Hey, Keith.
We're here to serve.
There we go.
Keith, thirty-one years ago, I knocked on over three thousand doors. That's how you get in, let the people meet you. They'll like it, too.
It's a lot of people.
Yeah, that's right, it's good.
They're opening doors now.
Plus, you don't have to worry about taking care of the kids, let the wife do it, that's always good, too.
Oh, you're winning today.
Okay, I didn't lose anything, Lori knows that's true. That's why I went out all the time. Okay, anything else? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bush, second by trustee Miller, Lori, call the roll, please.
Sorry. Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Jerish?
Aye.
Okay, folks, remember our next meeting is four weeks from tonight on December seventeenth. Enjoy a great Thanksgiving, be thankful, say your prayers, and we'll see you all in four weeks, meeting adjourned.
In these uncertain times, America needs a man whose very presence will instill confidence and commitment into this precious land. A brave man who will bring innovation and clarity to the American landscape. That man is...
Hello?
Ralph the Robot. Fridays at nine, only on Channel Six. Elk Grove Village is home to the largest industrial park in the United States. It's a community of makers, companies that invent, design, manufacture. When your neighbors are makers, the supply chain gets shorter, and profits grow. It's why businesses thrive here. Elk Grove Village. Makers want it.